Okay, so Adrian Fine, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I think we need to start where we've started with everybody else, which is on development-related issues. You've almost served two years on the planning commission. You're the chair of the planning commission currently. Have seen a lot of changes over the last two years in terms of both the makeup of the commission and sort of the policies that the city's debating. I'm wondering if you could just give us a quick snapshot of your development priorities right now? You have placed a lot of emphasis on housing, and I'm wondering how that balances out with your views towards commercial development?
Sure.
And then we'll get into some specifics.
First, let me thank you all for interviewing me here. This is really exciting. I've read your paper for many, many years here in Palo Alto, and it's pretty cool to be in these offices and in this seat. For folks who are watching on the camera, my name's Adrian Fine, and I'm excited about this opportunity to run for city council. So on development priorities, I believe over the past 20 or 30 years Palo Alto has really focused too much on office growth, which has led in a large way to our office housing imbalance, leading to the jobs housing imbalance. We have many folks commuting into Palo Alto to work here at our great companies, but there are, you know, terrible traffic and parking impacts. So I believe next year there's a great opportunity when we update the comprehensive plan and then go to the zoning ordinance update to kind of flip some of the incentives in terms of office growth versus housing growth. If you think about the balance of office and housing, or jobs and employed residents, there are two ways you can go at it. One, you can look at, you know, more housing. Two, you can look at less jobs. But the link between those two is the transportation. And so I also think Palo Alto is underinvested in our transportation systems, whether it's working with VTA, Caltrain, the Palo Alto Shuttle, or new technologies, rideshare services, scoop, that can begin to segment out the transportation market and provide better service for different users. So in general, I believe we need to focus more on housing in the future and then also address the jobs housing imbalance with transportation policy.
So I wonder if you could clarify a couple of positions that I think some people are confused by in terms of how they've evolved. The first is on the current development cap. You voted against it on the planning commission, and you've now said that you're for it until the comp plan revisions are done. Is your support for it currently based on the fact that the council adopted it over your objections and therefore just have to live with it? Or have you changed your views on it? Explain that difference.
Sure. So we, on the planning commission, many of us were against the office cap, but we eventually did recommend it to councils. There was a positive vote there. We felt it was not addressing the problems that council had laid out, mainly traffic and parking impacts of the office growth in the downtown area. So currently, the office cap is an interim cap, and I believe there's no point in getting rid of it until we adopt the comprehensive plan, at which point I hope our city will have better controls over office growth.
So do you fundamentally oppose the notion of metered limitations on commercial development? Or what would your approach be once the comprehensive plan is completed?
I don't fundamentally approach it, but I think in the way it was presented to the city and to the planning commission was a bit of a blunt instrument. That's the word I used. I think what's better is to actually address the impacts. So it could be with things such as performance metrics, supporting the city's transportation management association to actually get people to those jobs outside of single occupancy vehicles. We also need to work with the business community to make sure those folks do have alternatives, they can train their employees, give them go passes, eco passes, other ways to get to their jobs in Palo Alto. I've also been somewhat worried when, you know, some folks have said, well, the office cap should go to the whole city or to the research park, which should be 10,000 square feet. I don't think that really jives with the reality of our city as a center of innovation, economic development, and opportunity for newcomers and for current residents.
Okay, so let's pull that apart a little bit. So you're saying that there shouldn't be a development cap once the comprehensive plan is adopted? It should stem from, the limitation should stem from zoning that is implementing the comprehensive plan policies? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, the policies including support for the TMA, transportation demand management at the building level for existing and new users, and other performance metrics, whether it's parking, you know, whether the building is fully parked, whether, you know, we reevaluate how many employees per square feet, those kind of controls actually, rather than just an office cap, a square foot cap.
Right. So how do you respond to those people that say, you know, we've talked a lot about all those mitigation measures, and so far that hasn't succeeded in bringing about a reduction or even stabilization of traffic in our community, congestion in our community? And argue that until we can demonstrate that these methods work, that we need something that is a blunt instrument, and that meters growth until we can show that these other techniques can actually move the needle?
So there are a few companies in Palo Alto which have actually achieved some noticeable and laudable goals. Some companies downtown have, I think, a 30% single occupancy driver rate, and everyone else is using other modes. So that's actually a success. We also have the Stanford TDM program, where they have not generated net new trips since their last gap. That's also a success story, and they're expanding it to the research park right now. So we have success stories in our city, in our backyard. I think we need to work with those partners, look at what they've done, look at other cities such as Walnut Creek and Emeryville, which have really successful transportation management associations that help workers get to and from their jobs via public transit, via buses, via carpool, car share, and things like that. There are success stories. And I think, you know, right now we're still dealing with the fallout of office growth after we came out of the recession, right? So it still is very much on people's minds, and we're just, you know, things might get worse actually for a little bit still. The other worry I have about the office cap is that it may push the problem elsewhere, right? We may see new office development in other areas, and then we're not, still not addressing the impacts there. So I'd rather see the city address the impacts than more the symptoms, right? Rather than the, sorry, I got that backwards. Address the root issues rather than the symptoms, if that makes sense.
So you mentioned the traffic management program that Stanford has, which they are required by their county use permit to adhere to the no net new traffic measure. Would you support employing that in the research park so that as we look to further development, if any, in the research park, that same commitment applies?
I think that might be fair, yeah. I think it's worth exploring, absolutely. But we also have to be sure that we can provide the links to get folks to those jobs. The research park doesn't have the exact same control as Stanford University on campus does. They're a bit more connected to things like, you know, the backup on Page Mill or folks coming in via Caltrain. So it's a bit more of a cooperative between the city, Stanford, and the research park than what Stanford can do just on their own campus. But I think that is a reasonable solution to explore.
Okay.
One of the challenges with TDM seems to be that control factor. So if you have a large company, they have a lot of employees, they can achieve a good success rate. Then there are all the small companies with fewer employees, and arguably that's a greater challenge, is to get those people coordinated. Do you have any thoughts on how we can be effective in implementing TDM measures with a whole host of smaller employers? And would you favor TDMs in, say, just the California Avenue area, different parts of town?
Sure. So first of all, I think different businesses should be able to opt into the transportation management association to do transportation demand management, and that provides us an opportunity to pool their transportation demand and go advocate with somebody like Caltrain. So my company up in San Francisco next door has about 100 employees. We can't get go passes because we don't have enough demand, right? We actually don't have the volume. But if you pool a number of small employers, you can go and work with Caltrain or VTA and make sure, or at least try, to get passes for those folks so they can use an alternative mode at a reduced cost. I've spoken with folks at Trader Joe's, for instance, at Town and Country. They'd love to be part of the TMA. Their workers face similar problems to folks downtown, but they actually don't have those alternatives or the opportunity of joining the TMA right now. So I would like to open that up to a wider range of businesses, small businesses, and you know, maybe we segment it. Maybe there's businesses that are 0 to 25, 25 to 50, 50 to 100, and they get different packages from the TMA, and they pay a different price to join it as well.
And right now, the downtown TMA is just focused on that particular area. Do you favor expanding that particular TMA out?
I think it probably could be a city-wide TMA, or you start with Cal Ave, you know, maybe San Antonio at some point as well. Yeah.
Do you envision at any point transitioning from the carrot to the stick? You're talking incentives to join, but do you think that the city should, given traffic woes, implement a policy to require companies, existing companies, to participate in TMAs?
There may be a point where you'd say, yes, actually.
You've made a point of saying that in terms of development, housing is your priority, and that you feel that the commercial development that we've experienced has just contributed to making the problem worse. Before we get into the strategies to create more housing, if that's the case, if that's the premise, then why are you not advocating more regulatory steps to basically eliminate the impacts on housing of the creation of new commercial space? In other words, with every building that's approved, you approve the Olive Garden building, to take one example, although that's largely residential, but with every commercial space that we approve, we're essentially just, we're never going to make up for that, those approvals in housing. And so every building that's approved, we're losing ground. So before we get into the housing stuff, what is the appropriate measure to take as a governing body in approving new commercial development or new commercial zones that's going to address this problem so that we're not just forever digging ourselves in a worse situation?
Well, could you be specific about what you think are the commercial impacts on housing?
Well, yeah, we create jobs that we don't have, we're not providing housing for.
So I guess I don't see it as a zero-sum game in a way, right? Just because we approve a commercial building doesn't mean housing necessarily could have gone there.
No, I don't mean necessarily that location, but you're, from a community standpoint, and from that, for that matter, even a semi-regional standpoint, you've just made the problem worse. What Facebook is doing, for example, is creating huge additional burdens on the housing market by doubling, proposing to double the size of its workforce there.
Okay.
So on a smaller scale, we're doing that every time we approve a new building, and especially those buildings that invite a usage per square foot that's in excess of all of our historic calculations.
Right. So I think that the use per square foot is actually a bit of an issue. I'll just say, like, as somebody who grew up here, and you know, I have many more years to live here and work here, it's worrying to me that we would be saying, you know, we actually want to push off these jobs. I think that is not, that's something we really have to evaluate. It's not something we can do in a knee-jerk reaction, actually. We have to work with the business community, we have to work with residents, we have to work with regional partners to figure out what that means for the city and for this region. Furthermore, people do have vested property rights to build things, and sometimes that includes commercial space. So there is something there in terms of making sure that those folks also are served, they're also users of the city. I still believe, you know, there may be, as you mentioned, is there a stick that comes in on the TDM? There may be a stick that comes in on the office later. But right now, as Liz Ness mentioned the other night, you know, we don't have any office projects in the work, and it's likely that we're going to be entering a recession or downturn the next couple of years, at which point the council might be scrambling to keep office here like we did in the last recession. So to me, it seems like it's a bit of a cyclical response. Right now, we're at the peak, we're just coming off the peak, and we need to be very careful about how we regulate those users. And the second part of your question?
Well, I think you answered it. I think now I'd like to pivot to the question of housing, because you have made that a cornerstone of your campaign. I'm wondering what your goal is in advocating for more housing, what type of housing, and how you believe the amount of housing that can be produced is capable of actually changing the market dynamics?
Sure. So I don't actually believe we can change the market dynamics. You know, the market is the market, and this is a highly desirable place to live, and we won't be able to house everyone who ever wants to work here, or live here, actually. But I do believe we can make a good faith effort to keep our community values intact. And to me, those are things like inclusivity, diversity, opportunity, and the ability to grow up in a place with multiple folks of different incomes, different generations, at our schools, in our city, shopping in our shops. And so that's, to me, the guiding principle. It's about what is our community value, and how do we build that into our future?
And so how do you propose achieving that?
Sure. So in housing, we need to look at a number of slices. I think there is some promise to things like micro units, smaller units, because we may not be able to change the square foot price of housing here, but therefore we can provide less of that commodity to folks who may want that in their, in their future. We can also look at producing more rental units, condos, you know, accessory dwelling units are one piece of the pie. I don't think they're silver bullet by any means. We also need to look at things like preserving cottages and bungalows, kind of a historic housing type here in Palo Alto. We're going to want property to host three or four of these. A few of them have been knocked down recently to make a single-family home. That's a net loss of housing to our city. So it really is a number of different housing types. I call it housing choices, where we're looking at small units, we're looking at cottages and bungalows, we're looking at rental units, we're looking at, you know, mixed use which supports housing more than it supports office. And these are all things that you can affect in the zoning code. And I believe we need to look at them, figure out what the impacts are, but also look at the opportunity of housing, that it is a way to keep our community diverse, keep a range of incomes here, whether it's affordable housing or, you know, market rate housing, and also provide opportunities for, you know, renters who've been here a long time and don't want to be displaced, or seniors who may want to move near shops and services.
So in both Redwood City and Mountain View, there's been the development of the kind of housing you're describing, and neither community has adhered to the kind of height limits and growth restrictions that ours has. That new housing that's been developed hardly meets the description that you're giving in terms of its affordability. So I think a lot of people are having a hard time understanding how it is that the development of even high, relatively higher density rental housing, new construction that's costing well above the affordability range for anyone other than someone who's professionally employed by a tech company, is really going to lead to the diversity you're describing.
So first of all, I didn't really touch on the affordability part there. I know which developments you're talking about in Mountain View and Redwood City. Those are drops in the bucket for the Bay Area, right? We have created hundreds of thousands of jobs and tens of thousands of housing permits, many of which haven't even been built. You know, in Brisbane, up the peninsula, they're looking at some massive development, I think like 3, 4 million square feet and no housing. That's irresponsible planning. And so, you know, saying that, you know, a couple thousand units in Redwood City or Mountain View didn't make a difference, of course it didn't make a difference. We are in an enormous housing hole, and as a region, we all need to step up to that, which means each of us has to do our part, and we can't get caught in a prisoner's dilemma of saying that other cities are doing things, but it doesn't affect the housing price, so therefore we shouldn't do anything. I don't think that's responsible, actually.
But isn't that an argument for, basically tying commercial development to the creation of housing?
In some cases, it might be.
Because it's the rampant, and you respond, you just described it as irresponsible commercial development.
So you're saying that commercial development's also irresponsible? That's probably true, too, actually.
And we've been, we've done that in Palo Alto. I mean, that's, goes back to my earlier question about what breaks you would try to establish for commercial space.
Yep.
And your argument there was, we don't want to do anything to reduce job opportunities, given the cyclical nature of the economy. So to me, this is kind of a circular problem, and I'm not clear on how you get to the affordability question in Palo Alto that you're describing as your goal in terms of the kind of community we want to try to continue to be.
So there's two ways. One, as I mentioned, we do provide more housing choices, options, and I don't believe that they will go just to all one type of folk. I don't think that really happens. The second part is to support affordable housing, below market rate housing. You actually need new housing construction or new commercial construction. So if we are, you know, not allowing either of those, then we're not going to get more affordable BMR units. That's a cross subsidy. You know, nobody wants to talk about subsidies, but below market rate is a subsidized product. And so you actually need new construction to actually support that. And, you know, if you look at Palo Alto's last regional housing needs allocation measures, we did 38% of what we were projected or supposed to do by ABAG. I think that's a bit of a shame, actually, right? We weren't producing the lowest income housing needed for folks who may, you know, work in our coffee shops or work in city government or even at Stanford. So there's a balance there in terms of producing new market rate housing to support the below-market-rate housing, and same with commercial in terms of commercial linkage fees.
So the project that you approved and supported at the Olive Garden site creates, I think it's 17 units of market rate housing, and last-minute negotiations at the council meeting resulted in a second unit of affordable BMR housing. That's not very encouraging, and it's not very aspirational in terms of addressing what you're describing. We're going to have 17 units of highly-paid people renting there and two affordable units.
Yeah.
I don't see how we get to where, to what you're describing.
Sure. So on the planning commission right now, we're evaluating whether to increase impact fees or the onsite percentage. I think both of those are good options for Palo Alto, but I don't want to do it just as a shot in the dark. So San Francisco recently went to 25%, and a bunch of affordable housing developers, nonprofits are complaining the math doesn't work for them anymore. So as a subsidized product, we actually need to figure out what that balance point is. And in terms of the commercial linkage fees, we're at about $20.50 per square foot right now. That's pretty comparable to nearby communities. Palo Alto is a desirable market, so we can probably go a bit higher. But right now, we're being asked to triple them. That seems a little onerous, and I've spoken with some nonprofit affordable housing developers here in Palo Alto and across the peninsula, and they say that would just seesaw construction here in Palo Alto. So I think that's worrying, too. We want to figure out kind of that sweet spot where we are charging the maximum we can, providing the most money for in-loof fees and onsite, actually.
Great.
It's both of those.
And then finally, can you clarify your view on the 50-foot height limit? In your discussions at the CAC, the Comprehensive Plan Committee, you talked in terms of doing away with the 50-foot height limit pretty strongly, but more recently you've said that you wouldn't. How has your...
Sure. So on the CAC, we were discussing a range of options, what folks may like and what the community may be supportive of. So there were four or five options up there. My belief is, you know, we are not a built-out city, actually. We don't have any vacant land, but we still have room to grow vertically within the 50-foot height limit. However, I think there are reasonable exceptions that could be made, whether it's for affordable housing, maybe it's for nonprofit space, maybe it's for an area near transit, so like our PTOD district, Transit Oriented Development District. And I think in those cases, you know, we should be willing to explore, is it 65 feet? Is it 60 feet? I think that's completely reasonable. I think it was 800 High Street back in the day was looking for an extra three or four feet beyond the height limit, which would have allowed them to produce 30-plus affordable senior housing units. I think that's a missed opportunity, right? Nobody would notice the three feet there, and we could have had a number of extra affordable housing units. So I think for those socially valuable goals, we should be willing to explore flexing the height limit. On top of that, some of Palo Alto's best buildings, the Hotel President, Casa Real, you know, exceed the height limit, and they're currently legally non-conforming.
So what would your tool be for doing that? You've eliminated the PC zone, you've got zoning.
Yep. So I think that there's two that come to mind for me. So one is affordable housing. If we look at, you know, a density of affordable housing, and maybe it's some range, you know, I don't know, 15 extra units per an area. And the other one is within a certain area of a transit station. So our two Caltrain stations may be an option to do within a quarter mile, that you can go slightly above it in order to provide density that supports those transit systems.
So you would incorporate that into the zoning implementation of the comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
You mentioned earlier that transportation is underinvested, and I think everyone would agree with that, just looking at the ways that people try to get around town and can't, the shuttle or the VTA. One of the conditions, it seems to me, with high-density housing is that there is robust public transit available to us. Are we not putting the cart before the horse in trying to pursue high-density housing at this point without kind of a solid public transit system in place right now?
To some degree, but, you know, they go together, right? So VTA is currently looking at cutting some of its roots. They're also exploring BRT and El Camino. And part of the reason they're looking at cutting back in Palo Alto is because we have low ridership, there's not enough transit demand, and we have high car ownership, right? So...
It's tough to get people out of their cars.
Yeah, it is, it is the cart before the horse. But I think in certain areas, we can provide, as Bill mentioned earlier, these examples that are successful, right? So if we look at areas near Caltrain here or in university, maybe parts of El Camino, there is an opportunity to create slightly higher-density housing that is supported by transit, and I think that will strengthen our bargaining hand with groups like VTA to actually say, hey, look, on El Camino, you know, we've got this building, these folks are transit-dependent, we need to keep the 22 or improve it. Same thing for the 35 and the 88, 88 on Charleston. I think there are opportunities there. We've actually just, you know, the Treehouse opened recently, right? That's a highly transit-dependent building, actually, and VTA is looking at taking away the 88 from that. That's, that's not something we can support, and it's something we have to fight for.
Yeah, it seems like the city's been in a battle with VTA over service for many, many years. If you're elected to the council, what do you envision, what kind of steps do you think the city could take to both increase service and also increase funding of our own intra-city shuttle program?
So with VTA, it's political advocacy, right? We need a council that will go and meet with the VTA board regularly, try to convince them of Palo Alto's needs. We may also have to advocate in kind of a north-county way, so look at, you know, us, Mountain View, Los Gatos a little bit, and say, bring a couple of these cities together and go advocate to VTA, saying, we need service as well. We pay our fair share. You know, it's really important to us that we get these buses and services in our part of the district as well. Long-term, VTA's board may have to be reevaluated. I think it's seven of 12 or San Jose board members right now. No wonder all the funding goes to San Jose. It's not hard to understand. So we have to advocate with our county supervisors to make sure that that's on their minds and on their radar. In terms of funding the shuttle system, there's a few things I thought about. So one, the shuttle in Mountain View is funded by Google. We have a number of very wealthy companies here who we may be able to involve in that and have some naming rights and funding for our shuttle system. Two, we may have to look at, you know, dynamic pricing charges, parking charges in downtown and California Avenue. We're giving away this enormously costly resource for free, which causes weird market dynamics in terms of people expecting they can drive downtown and always get a free spot. And if we do want people out of their cars and on transit, we have to, we have to even out the economics there. And so I would be in support of potentially exploring a parking management system where we use our parking resources better and where we look at charging folks over the long term. Other cities have done this successfully, and they use those funds to, for things like the TMA, for shuttle systems, to support their bus network, and that's one way you begin to get people out of their cars and into transit.
Are you happy with the way the downtown residential parking program has evolved, and what changes at this point do you think are needed still?
I think it's been fairly successful, actually. I think it has done a lot to address neighborhood quality of life issues. So I think that's kind of the guiding principle there. One thing that, you know, everyone was saying from the beginning, we could have told you this in college tariffs, is like, if you do it to one area, the problem's going to move over. So the improvements I'd like to see is that if there is going to be a new RPP in a new part of town, we involve the neighborhoods around there to let them know, this may be happening next to you, and there could be potential impacts to you. You may want to step up and get involved as well. So that's one thing. Two, there's the micro districts, and there's 10 of them. It seems like two of them don't really need the commercial permits, right? The employee permits. So that may be a good test case for us to pull those out and see what happens to the rest of the district. I'd also like to see better monitoring of where folks are parking within different zones on a day-to-day basis, and then which businesses have opted in at which level for these permits. The last thing I think we really need to be aware of is, we're going to start chunking out, pulling out the employee permits over six or 10 years. It's not clear. As we do that, we need to make sure those employees have alternatives to get to work. If we just say, you know, folks cannot drive to get to work downtown Palo Alto, that's a big problem. If you walk downtown or Cal Ave, you'll see many businesses with signs saying, we're recruiting 12 servers or 12 dishwashers. That's an indication that it's very hard for people to get to Palo Alto, to their jobs, and, you know, some of these are low-wage jobs, so we need to figure out ways to serve those people better as well. So I think that kind of goes hand-in-hand with the transportation investments. As we do keep on improving the RPP, we need to simultaneously invest in the TMA and transportation improvements so our businesses can get employees. And I mean, that's stuff like, you know, you and me going for lunch, and is there a waiter for us? It's not necessarily tech jobs.
So this pump, of course, is moving to the California Avenue Business District, and Evergreen Park now wants in on this. We'll leave South Kate aside, since that's a little bit of a different situation, because it involves the students at Paly. Do you envision putting in place something that looks and feels like the downtown program for the California Avenue area?
I think it could. I think a lot's dependent on what happens with the public safety building and the garage there. Those have to be built into the mix and figured out what's going on there.
Yeah, but that's going to happen too far in the future to impact the implementation of a...
We should plan them into the, into the RPP district to make sure. I think California Avenue is getting to the point where we could use an RPP in this area. And, you know, we should, again, expand, as you said, Evergreen, maybe out that way to Page Mill as well. But then we need to look at Ventura, right, and see if there would be impacts there. I've heard from neighbors in Ventura, they're worried about folks who work on Page Mill parking in their neighborhood. So we may want to involve Ventura in that same system.
So my question really is, in the Evergreen Park process, which is underway and will likely happen, do you believe in a mixed use concept as we're using in downtown? Or you look to go towards the college terrace model, which is a big wall, as Donald Trump would say, to keep employees out.
Right. I think it depends on, we have to, I don't know the exact numbers here in Calav, how many parking spots would be available for employees and how many employees there are. So I'd have to look at those numbers.
And do you think it's, given that this problem has now migrated to the California Avenue area because of all the people that are now working here, is it fair that college terraces should have a different program that essentially exempts it from having to bear any of the employee parking burden?
It's probably not fair, but you can take that up with my neighbors. Yeah, at some point, it probably does have to be rationalized across the city and we have a a single, you know, RPP kit that can go out to different neighborhoods. And maybe it's different for Calav and downtown because they're kind of the exceptions. I think, you know, college terraces one was a genesis of impacts from Stanford, right, which are somewhat similar to being in a business district, but not exactly the same. So there may be some ways to improve the college terrace program and and bring it in line with some of the other RPPs. I mean Crescent Park also has their overnight parking ban, right? That's something other neighborhoods may be interested in. So there's a couple of different types of RPPs. And the city probably should figure out which are the types we want to offer to neighborhoods going forward. And how do we figure out that process so neighborhoods can opt in, you know, they notify their neighborhood next to them so they can opt in as well if needed.
So another neighborhood issue that's come up, well, it came up last year in front of the council was Airbnb, the regulation thereof. Council declined to take any action on it. Do you think that something should be done in terms of regulation and if so, what would that look like?
Absolutely. So I was at a conference last week and I met this one company that was mapping out Airbnb properties. And they showed me the map of Palo Alto and this was last Monday and there were twelve hundred and fifty on the market that night, going for an average of like a hundred and thirty bucks. That's a huge amount of our housing stock and it really surprised me. I think the main way to think about Airbnb is in terms of the neighborhood and quality of life impacts. So it could be things like folks coming in late, leaving early, people not necessarily knowing what to do with their trash. Or there's this one I've heard about, you know, where it's like fourteen people in a twelve bedroom house or something. I haven't confirmed that, but. You know, folks did not buy a home to live next to a hotel. So that's an issue. Some cities have put in fair regulations and taxes on Airbnb. So I think Santa Monica, Carmel, San Francisco, where they regulate either the duration of an Airbnb stay or the number of times you can host in your home per month. So maybe it's, you know, you host once per month and you can do it for up to five days, but that's it. We also need to work with Airbnb to collect the the appropriate taxes from them. And I think that's something that we should go up to San Francisco or have Airbnb come down here and say, work with us here. You know, because I don't think the city really wants to ban Airbnb outright. But we also need to figure out what's that middle ground in terms of quality of life and taxation to to fill the city's coffers and provide for services.
Out of what you've heard about from other cities and their regulatory processes, are there some solutions that seem to make more sense to you?
Yeah, so so the one, the two ways that I think some cities have approached it is, there's actually three ways. One, they're saying there's a minimum duration, so I think Carmel has thirty days, so then she's gotta, you know, rent a home for a month. Other cities have limited the duration smaller, so they're saying you cannot do more than three days or four days at a time.
Within a month.
Within a month, yeah. Personally, I think it's actually the number of times you rent it out, because if you're having a guest stay for a week, right, that may actually be somewhat okay. And they're here for a week, they're working, they leave and come at night in the morning. But if you're doing that every other day and getting a new person coming in, I think that's a bit more of a disruptive impact to neighborhoods. So it's looking at both of those, the duration of stay and the number of times you can rent out during a month, and then finally the taxation piece back to the city.
And I assume this begins with a permitting system.
So I mean, first we have to figure out the the size of the problem, right, actually, and figure out where they are.
You've got a pretty good idea of the size.
Well, this is, this is just one company that maps them out.
That's consistent with what others have found by doing informal research.
Right. And then, you know, we go and hopefully Airbnb can do that permitting for us in a way, right? If Airbnb has the location and the the incidence of rentals, right, that's something that should be provided to the city.
But they're also not the only.
Right, there's also VRBO and a few others, yeah. Airbnb, I think, is by far the largest.
Right. But you would support the city establishing a requirement that if you're going to engage in short term rentals, you would have to obtain a permit from the city.
Yeah, it could be a very simple online permit, but yes, absolutely.
A related issue is granny units or ADUs. Do you see any problem with relaxing the rules for allowing more construction vis a vis some people have concern about parking or just too many people in the neighborhood?
So first, we've got to consider this in light of the governors, the bill the governor just signed, right, which are essentially taking away some local control over accessory dwelling units. I don't like that because I generally believe more in local control than state control of these issues. I do think accessory dwelling units solve one small piece of the housing puzzle. It could be for elderly parents who may be moving there, you know, it's called granny units sometimes. Or it could be for a young adult child who's moved back home from college and is working here, but wants their own space in the backyard of the parents' homes. So I think that's okay. I think they're one of the least impactful housing typologies, actually, particularly when they're internal, so it's sometimes called lily pad units, where you section off part of a home and provide a small kitchenette. They can also be attached to the homes, they're also known as impactful. The most impactful is when they're kind of separated, right, with an actual separate second unit. In terms of the neighborhood impacts, I think RPP provides us actually pretty good control over this. That maybe you're allowed to build an accessory dwelling unit in your backyard in an RPP zone. You don't have to build the two required parking spots, but you don't get any more parking permits, right? And that's actually good control that folks are gonna have to share a car, they're gonna have to use a bike or transit.
Assuming they tell people when they rent their units that that there's a parking problem.
Yeah, I mean, but you'd have to, right? Like, you say like, hey, you're renting here, there's a parking problem, there's there's a space in the back you can you can rent, but you don't get a parking permit. And there's also, this relates to the Airbnb issue, right? We would need to figure out some way to make sure that these units aren't just used as, you know, continuous Airbnbs. But I think there are reasonable solutions there.
To change the subject, the the Edgewood Plaza situation with the absence of a grocery store there. You certainly aren't accountable for the PC being approved for that project because that predated you, but here we are. Do you support increasing the fines that are being levied against that developer? If so, to how much?
Sure.
And how do you, how do you view that problem?
So I do support them being increased, you know, PCs are dead in Palo Alto now, but we still have some other ones that we need to enforce. And part of the deal was, there was a twenty thousand six hundred square foot grocery store. And the developer's not providing that grocery store, there's not onsite, so we should increase the fines. I think we need to ratchet them up, right, so a thousand, two thousand, three thousand, four thousand, eventually make them make it hurt, right? At the same time, we need to look at ways to, one, I've, excuse me, thought about bringing in, excuse me, bringing in an independent auditor to look if, I think it's Sand Hill Properties, has done a fair study of, you know, who could be in that grocery store. They've promised that they've, you know, looked at all the grocers on the West Coast. I think the city needs to verify that and make sure that's true. If it's not true, we can increase the fines even more because they haven't lived up to their side of the bargain. Two, we need to.
And if it is true?
If it is true, then then we need to look at different ways to actually fill that space with a grocer according to the PC and to serve those neighborhoods. That might be things like a set of, and this is where we have to be creative, right? Maybe it is a set of small grocers, right, a fruit and veg person, a bakery, a small bakery, a small butcher. Kind of along the model of the Ferry Building in San Francisco, we have a number of small shops. If one of them goes out of business, you know, it can be replaced quickly, kind of tactically. And I think that is an option we should be willing to explore, but ultimately, we should be increasing the fines, working with the developer to bring in a grocer there. You know, I'm particularly worried about the College Terrace Center. We could be facing the same thing in a couple of years, actually. So this hits home to me. I used to go to JNF all the time. And, you know, neighborhood grocer is a quality of life issue. It is something folks want. They want to be able to walk there, they want to get groceries. Whether it's late at night, early in the morning, and we should hold the developer's feet to the fire there.
So ultimately, in in these situations, you feel that the developer should be held accountable to provide, even if it's at their major subsidy, a grocery store?
Yep. I mean, that's, that was part of the deal, right? They got the housing units, that was essentially a giveaway and then they were exposed to subsidize something else. So, yeah.
Want to touch quickly upon the architectural appeal appeals process? We have four twenty-nine University in Shady Lane. Is that an example of how well the process works because neighbors have been able to stop something that they are uncomfortable with? Or is that an example of a poor process because the developer has been in this kind of planning purgatory for a number of years?
So I'm not worried about the developer being in planning purgatory, but it is a poor process in that this project had been taken years, seven or eight times before the ARB. And then it, you know, blows up at council. To me, by the time decision gets to council, it should have been vetted out by the neighborhoods, by the developer, by the architect, by the ARB. So you kind of have the blowups down below, work out those different issues and then bring it on up to council, at which point, most of those issues should be worked out. So it's kind of an alignment issue, right?
What do you think the failure happened in this particular process?
I think there's a little bit of failure in terms of neighborhood outreach. You know, the appellant kind of came in kind of late and they probably were concerned about it. But there should have been more outreach on the project applicant's behalf to go to folks on Kipling and actually see what they thought and see what the structure meant to them. I think there's been a little bit of blinders in terms of the architecture, where, you know, folks obviously in Palo Alto are a little ticked off. Blue glass and steel buildings, with all respect here. You know, and and I think they're, they should have been a little bit more sensitive to that. But I I don't think it's an effective process if it gets to council and then, you know, it's kicked back to ARB a number of times.
So this is a staff staffing issue that there wasn't management?
Somewhat staff, it's somewhat project applicant, it's somewhat staff. Where there wasn't enough outreach, there wasn't enough, you know, cluing into the fact that this should look like this. Frankly, if we don't want buildings to look like that, we should put that in the code. I think, you know, if I were the developer, I'd probably be a little, you know, annoyed that I've built what I thought was to the code and, you know, it fits the ARB's description, but then it's getting rejected. So probably all around.
Sometimes the ARB is giving conflicting directions.
And and I mean, they're a review board, right? They're not a design board, actually. They're not supposed to be designing this board in the dais. Neither is council, actually, in my opinion.
So if you're elected to the council, you will be part of the group that'll, that hires a new city manager? How will that person in your mind look different than Jim Keane?
Sure. So that's in some ways maybe the most important job this next council will have, right? Because the city manager is likely to outlast the council and many of the staff and boards and commissions, so I take that extraordinarily seriously. I think there's a few ways. So Jim Keane, I think, has been very politically savvy and kind of understood how some of the winds are shifting and that's important in a city manager. But what I would like to see more of is making sure that there's, there's not a coziness between the city manager and different departments across the staff. I think the city manager is meant to kind of implement council's high level policies and and the direction they want to take the city according to the voters with the staff. Sometimes I think city managers insulated staff from some of these issues and staff sometimes feels a little heads down. You know, waiting for either a new plan or a new council. That's a waste of our time and our money. So I I really would look to somebody who is going to work their staff, make sure they're accountable and transparent. Sometimes I feel there's been a little bit of blocking there. Two, I'd like to see somebody get out with some of the neighborhood groups. So we're in College Terrace and, you know, we recently had Mayfield. And it really took the neighborhood to advocate against Stanford about these chemicals in the soil. That should have been the city doing it. You know, like, I'm not a chemical engineer. I was reading the reports and trying to figure it out, but I'm not an expert on those things. And I I thought that was a role the city should have played, rather than my Neighborhood Association finding a chemical engineer in our midst who can go look at this stuff and look at the reports and figure out, hey, there's something fishy here. The city manager should have been there. Maybell's another example, where the city manager should have seen the train wreck coming and gotten out, either slowed the process down or involved all the parties at a round table. That's really important. What else would I like to see different? I think, given that, you know, we are likely to enter a recession or a downturn, a city manager who takes fiscal responsibility extraordinarily at a high level and has an experience of doing that in terms of aligning the city's revenue sources with expenditures. Palo Alto could be facing, you know, decline in sales tax revenue. We may lose some money if the fire, if the fire contract with Stanford ends. So we need somebody who's kind of forward thinking on those fronts to figure out where can we cut things, kind of pre-plan that rather than doing it in the depth of a recession when it hurts even more. And then also figure out what are the new revenue sources. You mentioned, you know, Airbnb, that may be a new revenue source we should be aggressively going after today. Rather than waiting until a recession when nobody's renting the places anyways.
Okay, I think we're out of time. Thank you for coming in.
Oh, well, thank you guys so much. I really appreciate this.